This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. This is the regular March meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in the Brooke Room in the Library at Fairmont. And my name is Steve Imming, President of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call and introduction of attendees. Malavika Shokandi?
Here.
Sylvia Roba?
Here.
Amanda Motto?
Here.
Judy Lance?
Here.
Joe Heinrichs?
Here.
Tom Engelmann?
Here.
Greg Cooper?
Here.
And I, Steve Imming, am here. Laura Guinness is not, but hopefully will be along. Also joining us today are Jeff Collins, the Library Director, Lexi Riley, Assistant Library Director, Jennifer Williams, HR Operations Manager, Tracy Moore, Development Officer, Sierra Bianca, Fairmont Ranch Supervisor, Casey Shipley, Recorder, and Jerry Skelak, President of the Friends of the Library. Thank you, everyone, for taking your time to be here. We appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second? Malavika, thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Public with Comment. One is present for that, so we'll carry on. Next item on the agenda is Reports and Communications. First item there is Friends. Jerry, do you have anything for us?
I have just very briefly, I will mention just a couple of quick items. We want to mention that this April is actually the 40th anniversary of the Friends organization. And so I know we're hoping to do something to kind of acknowledge that either in conjunction with National Library Week or sometime in the April timeframe, and hopefully at all three library facilities. I'd like to just mention that, of course, Friends continues to provide important financial support to multiple library services and functions, and you all know that it's a very active group and helping to make everything float. In particular, just to reacknowledge that the significant contribution Friends has committed towards the early learning, interactive facilities that are being pursued. I would also note that my term on the Friends Board, and as Board President, will end next month. I'd just like to acknowledge the great opportunity and like to especially take this opportunity and thanks all the, thank all the library staff who've provided invaluable support, guidance. Kept me out of trouble, or at least told me what I needed to do most of the time. But it was a very great learning opportunity for me, and I sure appreciate that. As Jeff pointed out, though, that there is, supposedly the past president can continue to serve on board for an additional year, which I may plan on taking him up on that. I'll give that a little thought first before I commit to that. So anyhow, I just wanted to extend my appreciation to all the opportunities that this, that's provided me, including learning what a board book is. I've got three kids, and I still never knew what a board book was. I'm proud of that little detail.
Thank you for all you've done with the Friends and what the Friends organization does for the library. Many great things. I think particularly, at least my recent memory during your term, that a lot of things, part of a lot of things financially. Any questions for Jerry? Okay. Next item under Reports and Communications is Committee Reports. First item there is Finance. Do you have any comments on?
Well, if you look at the budget recap, or it would appear overall, if you look at the total city appropriation, we're right about where we should be in terms of percentage for the year. I did get an email about budget, budget change. And I'm sorry, I didn't look at it. I haven't yet. I don't, I didn't, like I say, just look at it.
Yeah, no problem. Do you want me to briefly talk about that? Yeah, just as part of the budget cycle for the city, is there usually is an amendment process that occurs a little bit more than about three quarters of the way through the process. So for FY 2023, the current budget cycle that we're in, it ends on June 30th of 2023. We are going to have to request for a budget, a budget amendment in one account. And that is the software costs, and that is to cover the reverse prepayments that the city had moved from FY 22 to FY 23. If you'll recall that from August, October, October. And that'll fix the overages that we've had in that account since 2022. So you can see that that area, for example, under allocated expenses, 530 software costs is at 152%. That's why, because that money was moved from an FY 22 expense to an FY 23 expense. So it made us go over budget. And so we're asking for an amendment from the city as part of that process to change that dollar amount, so we can come in under budget. And then the other amendments are the usual ones that we do every year, which are related to grants. So that's when we know how much money we receive from the State Library of Iowa, and that'll be incorporated again. Thank you.
So do we get grants from the State Library?
We do, yeah. We receive open access.
Yeah, but does that reduce our budget from the city?
It does not.
Oh, okay.
They just budget generally for the upcoming year as a zero dollar amount, I believe, for the library, knowing that we may or may not get grants. And then once we actually do get grants, then they will adjust, they will amend the budget that week.
And the software costs, is that something that, was that something allocated to all city departments?
I'm not sure how to answer, I'm not sure how to answer that. I don't know how they're going to deal with it. I know that it impacted a number of other departments.
Yeah, that's what I meant, as far as reversing the prepayments.
I'm not sure what City Finance is going to be doing. And again, this is just what we've requested.
Other questions? Next item under Committee Reports is Personnel. Amanda, anything going on there?
Nope, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Malavika, Advocacy?
Thank you. Thank you all. DEI Committee is doing wonderful job. Thank you, Lexi, and all of us, all of you and me, a part of that committee. I'm honored to serve along with you. I just have an update. They have absolutely fabulously, and we have these DEI 2023 goals that we planned for today. And if I might read out just a few, appreciate what we're working on. Is continue and expand staff training opportunities in various ways that we can. Host a movie night after hours for staff and board. And we will choose a movie that shows what other countries' cultures are like. Horror film that shows joy, rather than just struggle of marginalized groups, and something like that. And if we all remember, we had seen a movie together a long time ago in the main library downstairs in near Meets. I remember that. The second was include Board of Trustees, training opportunities. Invite all of us here for maybe in-service or share, you know, share some details as we have some monthly updates, maybe, you know, something like that. And we are also trying to explore many new ways of accessibility outreach. For example, just recently, Davenport Public Library participated in SEU Club Fest. We were there. Another opportunity we can see is we, two years ago, we had participated in the open day for all the incoming students at all the high schools in the city, you know. So we had gone there. I think we were, we were welcome, like anything, at all the three schools that we were at. So maybe explore those kinds of opportunities. Try and see what kind of library programming could be done towards marginalized communities. We already are working at maybe, you know, need to look into some more areas where we might not have reached. So these are a few goals. There are many here, but these are a few goals that we are working for to in 2023. So that is my update. Any questions, Steve?
Any questions, Malavika?
Be happy.
Are you going to bring forward to us goals or are the things that we as a board should adopt?
That, that is very, that's an interesting question, Tom, something that we would like, we would like to discuss further when we meet the, no, when the DEI Committee meets. But that's something interesting, and that's why I think the first two, you know, for participation. And then we kind of open up to something which would be, something which we can do together. So the first two goals that we had was to have all of us participate into some activity. And then we can go from there. That could be more specific. But thank you for asking something that I would certainly share maybe next or the next meeting. So thank you for asking. And we do meet next week on the 29th.
Next item under Committee Reports, whoops, could be under Reports and Communications, is the Director's Report. Is there any, anything you want to amplify or add?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Thanks, Steve. There are a couple of big items that we need to discuss today that I want to make sure that pass on. First, there is a memo in your board packet that provides information regarding the reduction towards the operating hours at Main. So this is informational only, but essentially as a summary. We entered into an MOU in 2017 with EICC to provide library services to students attending classes at the downtown urban campus, so the SCC urban campus, that went into effect in July of 2018. And we were able to extend the hours at Main by 10 and a half hours a week. So we were able to stay open until nine o'clock Monday through Thursday, and then also open at nine o'clock, or I'm sorry, 8:00 PM at night, and we were able to open on Monday at 9:00 AM. We were then able to successfully obtain funding from the city for increased hours at the branches, so that all three libraries can stay open until 8:00 PM on Monday through Thursday. Unfortunately, the EICC provided notice that they are not going to be renewing the MOU, and it's entirely understandable. This is because they have declining enrollment at their SCC urban campus. As I'm told, they had plans to increase up to 1,000 to 1,500 students at their campus, and they've been having about 100 students at their campus since COVID. So directly related to COVID. So they're in the, in the options stage of pursuing what they can do. And one of those is including not renewing our MOU. So what that means for the library is a loss of revenue of just under $93,000. So to make up for that budget shortfall at this time, we've elected to not fill the vacant positions that we had. So that is two part-time librarians at 24 hours, a part-time senior clerk at 20 hours, and a part-time substitute employee at five hours. That still leaves us with an overall shortfall of over $1,200. And City Finance has indicated that's okay for our FY 24 budget. However, what that means is that effective May 1st, we will be changing the hours at Main because we did receive this funding to increase those hours. So correspondingly, we're going to decrease those hours at Main. So it will be a decrease of seven and a half hours, but still an increase of three hours total since 2018. So the new hours are going to be Monday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then Tuesday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:30 PM. Curbside hours are also going to decrease from 6:00 PM to 5:00 PM. They will remain the same at Eastern, and then Fairmount here has spread through the window. We acknowledge this is not ideal, obviously, for the public. However, this does allow us to provide library services to the public system wide from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 5:30 PM Fridays and Saturdays. In terms of other specific considerations for Main, homeless shelters do open by 5:00 PM. So there shouldn't be a negative impact in that area. We have a communications plan in place, and we're going to be announcing the change to the public beginning April 10th via social media, library website, and posters. Posters are only going to go in Main. We don't want to create any confusion here at the branches. There are a couple of other unanticipated costs that are associated with this change. We're going to have to change our signage, so the curbside metal sign has the long hours that'll have to change. And then we have hours decals on the front doors that'll have to change. So there is that, and I also included the MOU for your edification. I'm happy to answer any questions on that. I do have a couple of other items to discuss that are not related to that.
I guess my, my point is, it's understandable from the EICC's perspective in terms of, you know, the fact that they don't have students down there. Have we communicated back to them, indicating that we're sorry, this is the reason for this, and we're more than willing to pick this back up if they decide to, if they decide they need it in the future?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that, we still have a very good positive relationship with them. So that is an option if it does continue in the future. They are going to try to fill the void of library services in a couple of alternative ways. I'm told they're going to be doing more Zoom interviews of the traveling librarians. It's not going to replace the library, obviously, but it will allow them to maintain their accreditation. And this is just something that they've indicated to us that they need to do at this point because it's not cost-effective for only 100 students.
You have a question to that?
There may be other changes. So the last point on that is there might be other changes that come of this. This is what we're doing right now as far as our plan moving forward. Short notice, and we need to make sure that we're doing something. We're not sure how that is going to play out because we do have to work on coverage. And we're going to have issues by losing essentially four bodies that can work at public service points. It's going to negatively impact our ability to be able to serve at those service points. So there might be other changes that are going to be related to this. This is what we're doing right now to make sure that we can move forward. The next item, as you know, a man was arrested and charged with sex abuse at Main on March 14th. That individual was part of the trespass from the library. And we removed some seating from the area where he had that incident. We also have some additional hours that are slated to go into effect with the new budget cycle in July for our security, so that we can go ahead and security presence more often at the library. As you know, we would prefer to have security 100% of the time at Main. And that has not been successfully accomplished yet, working with our budget, working with the city. So we would obviously appreciate more financial considerations in that area. Our annual in-service development date is coming up, so that'll be April 27th. It will be at Eastern, so all three libraries will be closed to the public. Trustees are welcome to attend. If you are interested in attending all or part of that, please just get in contact with Casey so that she knows. And we should be in compliance with the open meeting laws because it is for training purposes. We will have a pretty good day slated right now. We're going to have a guest presenter from Clark to discuss inclusive language in the morning. And then in the afternoon, we'll have a guest presenter from Black Pearl Coaching to discuss burnout and mental health. We'll also have a couple of breakout sessions in the morning and the afternoon for staff, and provide a lunch for staff as well. There will also be a photo that Staff Association is going to be doing, so all staff. So if the board is ever interested in getting a photo done, that could be an opportunity for you. It'll be late, late afternoon, about 3:45 or so.
If trustees show up, we'll get a chance.
Good to know. Now I'm in.
The Community Center is out to bid. It closes this month. And then Parks and Rec is researching the feasibility of building a playground on the grounds here using our funding as well. So we're hopeful that that will come to fruition.
If it don't change, it bids today.
What's happening?
If it doesn't change again, it bids today.
Okay.
I've been going nuts.
Yeah. In terms of programs, we did, want to acknowledge the partnership with the Friends again for their financial support. We were able to work with the Friends and then Davenport Community Schools, Rock Island Public Library, Rock Island High School, and Loc Rose Magazine to bring bestselling author Nick Stone to the Quad Cities. That happened on March 2nd, and she was able to speak to close to 800 to 900 area students, signed books, took photos, just did a really great job. So thank you to the Friends for making that an option for us. Thank you to Amber and Emily and U Services for recording that really successful man. We're really excited to have them. And on a related note, as Jerry had mentioned, April 15th is the 40th anniversary of Friends official art clothing celebration. So we're looking at doing a few things during that month to help the spotlight Friends and some of the things they have done for the library. So stay tuned for that. Brittany Peacock is going to be co-presenting with Becca Niles at Parks and Rec at the Iowa Parks and Recreation Conference, River Center, March 29th. They're going to be talking about the importance of library parks partnerships and the impact that those partnerships have on community lives, which is really cool. And then, Steve, you'll talk about the last thing. Do I have, are there any questions? Have it answered any questions or concerns? Any questions?
Question?
Oh, glad, Jerry. I'm just curious, and I don't know if somebody else in this room, I'd like to say about this load of absolutely declining EICC, EICC enrollment downtown, and all you ever hear about is the growth in population downtown in 30. Are you looking at why that's the trend?
I do have to ask EICC for that, but from what I understand, some of the programs during COVID went online. So those students have chosen to continue that online, and they're not coming in person. And so when you look at the urban campus, it's split essentially between half of it is administration, the other half is continuing education in classrooms. And I believe because most of that has transitioned online, there are less in-person enrollment. And so they're reevaluating their entire systems as a result of COVID and other trends as well, as I understand it. Again, I'm going to try to answer that. I was just curious.
I remember, Ben V would have been at the Tenders with a part of the convention. We used to go to the EICC campus down by Pleasant Valley, and they had a small little library. And it was tiny, but, you know, staffing was an issue, so we used to go there at that time. That's what I remember when you said library and other questions. Oh, Jeff, you just told us about the outreach, Brittany and everyone. And I just read about Michelle and Quinn going for a conference. Today is World Social Worker Day. Just throwing it, throwing it out to members, so.
I have a question from your report, Jeff. You mentioned that Saturday, that special collections was closed due to staffing. Is that, is that staffing in general, or people specifically, people that work in special collections as far as, you know, having specific skills that couldn't be replaced by just?
That's exactly what it is. We have only five employees that work in special collections. And so in order to provide that level of service to the public, those employees there, for safety purposes, we always have these two employees on each floor. So.
Was that an issue?
That was an issue. I mean, is, is it an issue?
That day that it was shut down?
That was an issue that day, yeah. Okay, yeah, due to scheduling. Because we'll generally have to work Monday through Friday or Tuesday through Saturday. So employees can have time off of work because we're here for six days. And for that particular one, we had, it was something to the conference, we had something that was scheduled for vacations, all that sick.
No, but my question is, was it, was it a problem for the patrons?
I didn't hear anything. Okay. It's possible it could have been, but I didn't hear anything. We try to, obviously, we try to avoid that whenever possible.
Sure.
But it is challenging to, to staff all the service levels that we do at our current staffing levels.
Jeff mentioned another item there, and that is that, I don't have the date. Anyway, April is also National Library Week. And so we have requested that a proclamation be made at the city council meeting to, to announce that, recognize that. And I guess this is the way it's planned to go, and hopefully it will. Marion will read our proclamation.
But in my request, or your request.
Yeah, yes, yes. And so, so anyway, that'll be at the city council meeting on the 21st.
April 19th?
19th.
Wednesday, April 19th, 5:30?
Yes.
If you are interested in attending, we'd love to have you there. There'll be a proclamation read by the, hopefully by Marion. And then there'll be a photo opportunity where the proclamation will be handed to Steve to accept. Steve can share a few remarks, and then there'll be a photo of the mayor or the owner.
And I can, if I read it, I can say, we have board here. Would you like our staff, would you like to join us? I mean, if we're okay with that.
Yeah. It's a, you know, it's the size of just recognizing libraries as an opportunity for us to engage with the city council and mayor, and so they know who we are, kind of build those closer relationships. One last thing in regard to the Director's Report. If you were reading that, you might have noticed that there was reference to, to a podcast that Jeff was involved in. And I listened to a part of that, and I recommend it. It's very nice. Find out a few things about a library director that you may not know. Anyway, moving on. Next item on the agenda under Reports and Communications is our city council liaison, Marion. And let the record show that Marion has joined the meeting. I'm not saying that earlier. Anyway.
Yeah, just a few things. First of all, we are in the process of approving the annual budget. We, it's on the, it's on the agenda for Wednesday night. This is in the, you know, with the hiccup with the state, we talked about that. The city continued, they will fill with backfill dollars that we don't ordinarily budget in a conservative way. And so the budget that Jeff worked on, his staff worked on, every other, every other department worked on so hard starting last August, will go as, you know, as it was scheduled. So that was the decision that was made. So, so that, that, and that will be on time. So that will be, I think the state gave some extra grace, but we went ahead and we're doing it. So we had made that decision earlier as a, as a, as a council. We did have, you guys probably heard about the bond ratings for the city. So we, we did get an increase in one, and the other came in yesterday, and it was where it was, which was a great place. They had already raised that a couple of years ago. So, I'm sorry, I'm throwing this right here. So that's good news for the city, because in these times, the challenges as a large city with a number of people in sort of restricted means, more than some of our neighbors. That's one of the things, actually, that makes it challenging for the city. But we've managed to, you know, our financial balance in order, planning is done well. So it's, it's a real, it's a real win for us. So in any case, the party in the park, they're still talking about what they're going to do. It looks like we might do two in June and two in July. So, but I don't have those dates, but that's kind of what they're talking about. June is, July, I mean, two in June and two in August. July is a challenging month because of the Fourth, the BICS, you know, now RAG-BRI as well. So there probably won't be one, so there'll be four this year likely, but that's still to be determined. You guys have always been a great partner in that. There may be, there is some early discussion about maybe an event on the BICS, a family thing in Leclerc Park, because that kind of got lost in the changing of not having the street fest, which unless you were like 25 or younger, probably can go to. Anyway, eating only on months, I'm like, what? I almost had to get a coupon to buy beer. I'm like, I don't know. So anyway, so, but, but that part, that family part was lost a little bit. So there's some conversation. I don't know if there'll be anything or not. But there's some conversation about that as being an additional thing. But there's some conversation about that as being an additional family event. You guys all have heard, probably, the flood forecast. It is about, right now, about an 80% chance that there'll be a flood level at 19. It goes down precipitously to the level we were at in 2019. But all the plan, which was the big 22, you know, 22 feet. So, the plans are in place. We are meeting with folks who are impacted, you know, in the floodplain there. It's the typical plan. We will be doing, if the HSCOs are required, they have, they do things at different stages, of course. And it starts at 15 feet down at, you know, the west end, because that is the lowest part of the city. But we will be doing, we have to do the HSCOs, they will be done in an L configuration, which is one of the recommendations after the big flood. But it's right now not expected to be anywhere near that scale. It's more like 2020 probably. So, at some point, we may have the two-way traffic, you know, up on Fourth Street, if it gets, if it warrants it. We're not going to do that, of course.
It'd be practicing, huh?
Practice. So, you know, but the staff has got its plan in place, and is now talking and having meetings with, meetings with people who were at the floodplain this week to talk to them about that. The other big news, of course, last week, was that the Canadian Pacific, the Canadian Pacific merger was approved, which I think everybody thought it would be. So, and that does potentially have an impact on the library downtown. Most significantly, this allows us to move ahead with the planning for silent crossings. Prior to this merger, we were able to, we reached out to an engineering firm, an outside engineering firm, to start a plan, because obviously, a silent crossing situation, and this would be all the way across the city, would, but you know, there's many horns blowing going through downtown right now. That's the, you know, where most of the crossings are right, where the horns are blowing. But in any case, there are a lot of regulatory things that have a lot of approvals. I'm sure the state, I'm sure the railroad, I'm sure there's federal approvals. So, this will take a while. I don't know what the deadline is, but that is probably the first project, I would say, sort of out of the gate, because it is, it is, it will impact a number of areas across the city. So, we had gone ahead and contracted with a firm to do that planning. So, now they can go to work and begin that. The other thing that we've been working actively on is a conquered road. Part of the agreement with Canadian Pacific was we had to set aside $2 million of the 10 to, for that, for that crossing. That's certainly not enough to pay for it. They had indicated in the, during the negotiations, they would help us with other grants and things like that. And so, prior against the merger, the city made an application with the federal rail administration for a grant with Canadian Pacific's approval and support. But in any case, we should care about that in summer, if we've gotten that. And that should tell us, and we feel pretty good about it, because it's kind of right down the alley of what they get grants for. So, that should start from almost about that a little bit more as well. So, the other big projects are the pedestrian crossings, which as part of the whole Main Street landing planning, which has ARBA dollars, it has Destination Iowa dollars, as of a couple of months ago, because that was approved. And one of the pedestrian crossings, at least one of those, we're looking at in, somewhere in that area of the park to get people across, and they could, it might come over and split, go to different areas across the park. But in any case, that one is probably going to be part of, there will probably be one in the Main Street landing configuration. There is another, we think there's enough money for another crossing. But that, right now, we're not, there are so many projects right now that we need to get launched out and planned, that we're not rushing to figure out. There will be a lot of community discussion about that, and you will be hearing, as well as you should be hearing more about Main Street landing as well. And I say that because with the ranch downtown, you know, Main Street landing is supposed to be a, an attraction for, a regional attraction. That could have some very positive impact, I think, for a library. So, there should, you know, I would encourage you guys to please come and be actively involved in any, we've had a number of public meetings. Sasaki is the group designing the Main Street landing area. I certainly encourage you, if you live in Davenport, if you don't, but especially if you live in Davenport, please come and have input at those sessions. It's very important that they hear from everybody. So, and there'll be a lot more public discussion as well. There was, everything was a bit on pause, some of these things, because we didn't know if the merger was going to go, which we did assume we would, but we couldn't, you know, absolutely say that. So, you know, you'll start to see that rolling, you know. And that's really all I have today. Unless anybody has any questions for them.
Questions for Marion?
Thank you.
Oh, I don't know if I'm allowed to or not.
Sure. Just a quick question. Any insight at all as to the status and actual development of vacant property next to the main library?
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to be, I think, 40 apartments?
Or when, I guess.
No, I don't know that. They've, you know, cleared the site. There were some issues with debris and stuff like that that I turned in. Please go ahead, yeah, continue to do that. But yeah, there's, as far as I know, it's going to happen. I haven't heard any, they went through design review, and they got their first design sort of tweaked. So, now they had to do something a little differently based on design review. So, they have had to do that process. From what I know, it's still, but that's not an area unnecessarily.
Still, you've got a mirror to the ground.
I know, I understand.
Good question. Thank you, Sharon. Moving on the agenda, next item is old business. First item there is a motion to approve changes to the discrimination and harassment policy. We discussed that at our last meeting. Move the changes to the discrimination and harassment policy. Thank you. Sharon, second?
A second.
Steve? Thank you, Melvin. I have a motion in second to approve changes to the discrimination and harassment policy. Is there any discussion?
Jeff? Just one quick update. The DEI team was able to look at this policy at their last meeting, and they made one recommended change incorporated. And that was related to the EO list to make it a little bit eligible. As you know, there were a lot of parentheses, and it was awkwardly worded. That was also something to order to discuss at the last one.
Any questions regarding the DEI change? Hearing seen none, call for the vote on the motion to approve changes to the discrimination and harassment policy. Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
My own vote is yes. Whoops, Malvika?
Yes.
Thank you, Malvika. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the motion to approve changes to administrative policy 2.6, public relations. Also discussed that at our last meeting, and change involved heading a section having to do with talking with the media.
I move the changes to policy number 2.6, public relations.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sylvia. I have a motion in second to approve changes to administrative policy 2.6, public relations. Any discussion? Hearing seen none, I'll call for the vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Malvika?
Yes.
And Sylvia?
Yes.
My own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, new business. Item there for discussion is the gift acceptance policy. Some of you may recall that many years ago, we decided we should have one of these. We struggled and struggled, and finally got it, and...
It's back again.
And what we ended up with was good. Formatting was different than what we had been doing. That's one thing that's been brought into refinement with this update. Anything particularly you'd like to point out about these changes, Jeff? You did, Jeff did provide a menu, a menu memo about the recommended action, which today we're just discussing.
Just to add on to what Steve had mentioned, the board had already done this in 2016, and again, reviewed in 2019. This is just a part of the routine cycle to review it. Most of the changes are just related to formatting largely. And we do still have some procedures that are involved with implementing the policy, including naming opportunities document. It's pretty straightforward.
Any comments from Steve? Changes to the policy?
Yes. Well, I remember one of the things we kind of struggled with back in the day was the concept of naming rights. You know, when, when, when we do some kind of large capital project, somebody gives us $50,000, you know, is that, is that just by naming the room over that or something like that? You know, that was, I don't think we ever really kind of settled, totally settled there, did we?
Well, I don't recall where we left that then, but with the most recent changes to the 50th anniversary of May, that was addressed by the fundraising committee and then brought to the board.
Okay, all right. So, we did it address.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think right now, we've got it in there so that recognition of gifts, including naming opportunities, will be determined by the board on a case-by-case basis. So, it's in there. And then, library staff also have a naming opportunities guidelines document that we can use when we are having conversations with any potential donors to give them a potential benchmark. If they ask for, if it comes up in conversation, we know kind of vaguely where that L amount might reach, and a list of items that might make sense to get named as well. But of course, anytime any of that comes up, that would then come to the board for approval.
I think classically, back when I was in the council, I think we're struggling with updating the stadium. I made the observation, name everything in the place. I mean, even down to putting it on a plaque above a urinal. Somebody wants it, let's do it.
I think that policy's changed. The city's very careful about that.
Yeah.
Have they had a new downtown line?
But the point was, is that if someone gives you $100,000, you know, you should be able to recognize that. It's not like appropriate. Number one says money. Should we add alternative currencies? That crossed my mind, too. I forgot about it. I mean, I don't know enough about them to...
Oh, no one does. No, stop.
Can you give them away? Oh, I'm sure you can.
I think you can. It's, it's fun. I mean, yeah, you can give it away. But what do we do with it? See, there's the question.
Language.
I can have some thought, Jeff.
I'm not sure. I understand the concern.
Money, no, just, should we include like alternative currencies?
Oh, like cryptocurrency? Yeah. Oh. We can absolutely change that to say money, and other currencies. But not limited to cryptocurrency.
But not this week.
See, that could be money or other financial. I mean, somebody might give you, well, they're, you've got annuities, trusts, stocks. You have stocks.
Pretty much everything else.
I think everything else is in there.
We could actually add that in.
Well, yeah, I guess, you know, maybe as going forward, when I look at these like every three years, although we can bring them forward anytime when there's need for significant change. Who knows what's going to happen in three years?
I think it's covered in other in-kind gifts or services.
I don't think any of these are in there. It's not even recognized.
Okay.
Steve, I have one question.
Yes.
But Jeff, just to start with curiosity, we do accept gifts as a part of a gift. Now, when that something comes in, we acknowledge that gift, right? I mean, we send it to the bank and...
Yeah, it depends on what gift will have a variety of...
And accepting it to be in our collection. And this is again, a curiosity question. If an item from that gift, let us say, is read out, is it our responsibility to let the gifty know that this item was read out? Because sometimes people take tax exemptions on these gifts. But I don't know. It's just curiosity.
Yeah, usually, we won't do that. We won't let people know what happens to something three, five, seven, 12 years after the fact.
So, these are...
But usually, something, an item's not going to get read out for at least three years.
Two years.
When it's added to the collection as well past their, their tax.
But then, okay, well, past their tax exemption status.
Right, whenever they're...
Okay, that's, that's what I was thinking.
But that's also something we make clear to people, too, is that we, you know, we're not responsible for providing documentation for the tax. Like, yeah, we thank you for your, for your gift of this book.
Right, right. I was just wondering, because sometimes people have the habit, then it's like good gift. You take a receipt, and then you add a value to the gift that you have taken, you know? And that's how, and that's what I was thinking. Does that affect us in any way? But I get you. It can be three or four years, so that doesn't matter. Thank you.
No further discussion of this item. We'll carry it forward to the April meeting for approval. Which brings us down to President's comments. Okay, just wanted to remind everybody again, we've talked about this two or three times, but there is a section of the strategic plan, I think it's 1.1, objectives. It has to do with the board, and it has to do with marketing. So, what it comes down to is sharing with our networks, information about the library. In other words, us, I guess, marketing the library through our conversations with our friends, relatives, coworkers, business associates, whatever. And actually, you know, this, this really, doesn't have to be anything really complicated. It can be very simple. Maybe in some instances, just talking with family members. So, if you think about these items that we have here, that we have the items right here, and these may give me some ideas. So, if any of these items, just for example, if you have those in mind, and you're talking with a friend, a relative, coworker, business associate, and they say something about, you know, I thought one time about having a rain guard. Oh, well, the library's got a program on that. But even if it's just, you know, talking with a neighbor, you know, the library has storytimes. So, just anything like that, sharing that information is marketing. And in fact, one of the... And in fact, one of the items that today is a calendar of events. And there's a whole month's worth of things in there. In fact, I have one to share with my daughter that, hey, how about storytime tomorrow at 10 o'clock? For our three-year-old granddaughter. So those are the kind of things. It doesn't have to be anything, you know, really well planned out or anything like that, but just sharing information with people you come in contact with. And so I would ask you to kind of give that some thought between now and our next meeting. And maybe if you could each bring an example of something that you share, just so we have a way of showing that we, yes, showing that we, we did this and we can cross it off on this. But hopefully it's something we'll continue to do, you know, all the time, just help get the word out and like I say, market the libraries. Please give that some thought.
And see, one thing to add on to that is the great work that library staff does developing all of these different communications and getting that word out. What we want to try to do is spotlight some of those key events for you. Every month we'll kind of bring these with you. And then the calendar events is really great because you can just open it up and then put it on the fridge and you have all of this stuff right there. So that's something to refer with, with your networks as well. And just to come in real handy, especially for busy parents and little kiddos.
Yeah, and these are items that are really available in the library.
Exactly.
Yes.
If you need additional copies, just stop off at any of the service points and we'll be able to get those for you. If you want to take some with you, feel free to just stop off at any meeting or room that you're in. They can get those items as well.
Library, do you have a seat package again?
Yep, yep. We hit close for a three-week period to get kind of restocked and then opened again, and they're going fast. So that seat library is at May.
The micro波的sandwich was delicious. They were from here, the micro.
Steve, if I could just add something. This is a totally different subject, but it's not really directly related to us, but it is kind of library-related. I read recently that there is a, this is a school issue. There's a publisher of school books by the name of Studies Weekly. And they're, they're redoing their social studies books and they're taking race out of the discussion of Rosa Parks. It's like, okay.
No, she was tired.
The conservative.
She needed to sit down.
Nuts.
That's what it says. That's in Florida.
That's, that's the message they're trying to sell.
Yeah.
She was tired and took the first seat.
But, you know.
And there's nothing.
But didn't it, didn't it happen to be African-American?
She didn't go to jail. There's some. It was a whole.
People that had logs thrown around, they were just thirsty.
Yeah.
Well, it's a whole thing in the New York Times where they're discussing the changes in Florida, but I think we in Iowa need to be paying attention.
Absolutely.
Run some race to the bottom here with some of this stuff.
It's all the same playbook.
It is.
It's all the same playbook.
It is, but I think it'll be.
Yeah, okay.
I have a short list here about the library. Is this just like a good time? Or is there a better time? Or should I just not do it at all?
I just want to get Bianca.
Oh, yes, Bianca, yeah.
So that's okay. No, no, it's okay. So anyway, Bianca Supervisor here is gonna give us some board training, which also all of this board training is loading us up with information about the library and things that we could share with her next.
Hopefully it doesn't matter that I can't be seen. But I want to see all you. Hey, so for those of you that don't know, I'm Bianca Sierra, coming up on nine years at the library in May and seven years as the branch supervisor at Fairmont. Really excited to get to talk to you. And Jeff mentioned that we get to rotate coming in and talking about what we do. I was really excited. So I kept it pretty short. You already have it. Maybe you already read it. I'm just gonna read it to you. Jeff and I talked about afterwards, if you want to. I would encourage you to come take a look at the children's area with us especially. We can show you what we've done recently. Maybe Jeff can talk about some of the things that we are thinking of doing or wanting to do with the, I don't know what it's really called. The children.
Enhancement.
The enhancement set. Alright, so just an overview of who works here and what they do. We are a full-service library and we're primarily staffed by customer service, information services, and youth services. And they actually rotate through all three of the buildings. We do have one full-time caretaker, which is kind of like a custodian or maintenance person that works just at this library during the day. And then Fairmont in its eastern share, an evening caretaker, maintenance person that works between the buildings as well. We have a part-time clerk that pretty much just shelves books. And then myself, I work a combination of daytime, evening, and Saturday shifts. And then I pop in at May every couple of weeks and work a day there. The services that we offer, we have notary services, librarian, account services, reader's advisory assistants. We have public computers, faxing, printing, scanning, capping. They are all self-service, but staff is available to help if needed. We have two meeting rooms. This is the brick room, and then the larger one is the S B R A. That's available for patrons to use during our most operating hours. The book note, which you may have seen on your way in, so as you leave, it'll be the last drawer on your left. That is a relaxing space that has vending machines, a sink, a microwave, and comfortable seating. We also have a really unique space called the caregiver spot. We can show you that when we go over to the children's area. It is, has a play area attached to an adult computer station. So if you come in with a toddler or even some baby crawling around, you can put them in there while you work right next to them. The Fairmont bookstore is very popular. It is staffed and it is staffed limited hours, six days a week, and it is exclusively by volunteers. And Frank does a fantastic job of running the bookstore and making sure the obese have staff here to work it. Fairmont is also really unique in that we offer a juvenile snack pantry where school-aged children are provided snacks upon request. So we have a kitchen area connected to the S B R A meeting room where we have stored various healthy snacks and children come up, keep them up with any time, and we'll take them down there and give them some snacks. The Friends have provided us with funding to go through the end of 2023. We were originally partnered with Riverbend Food Bank, but we really didn't have access to healthy snacks like we wanted to. Now that we have that funding, we have all kinds of healthy options for them. Programming, youth and information services provide a wide variety of programs at Fairmont. They utilize the meeting rooms, the story room, the children's garden, the library grounds, and the parking lot. Summer reading kickoff and the annual block party draw hundreds of community members to the library each year. Our partnerships, the annual block party provides an opportunity to partner with numerous local nonprofit organizations such as Scott County College, the Humane Society of Scott County, the Quad State Bicycle Club, and the Brain Injury Alliance. Last summer, the library partnered with the Riverbend Food Bank to provide snacks to juvenile patrons. The library has partnered with the local Heatherton Good Neighborhood Group on multiple occasions, including trunk or treat and movies on the line. In April of this year, the library is partnering with the Heatherton Good Neighborhood and the Community Health Center to provide a wellness fair at Fairmont. Looking ahead, we are currently working with the Master Gardeners of Scott County to potentially transfer some of the maintenance of the Fairmont Forest to them and provide related programming to patrons. The food forest was a project of the Prairie Rose Collection and began in 2018. Shortly after planting trees, the group disbanded and had been scrambling to try to figure out how to keep this going and get all the money spent. None of us really know what we're doing. So it's been really great to have Ron from the Master Gardeners come and help us out with that. So lastly, we have some recent and upcoming building changes. Fairmont recently updated the layout of the children's side of the library, purchased new furniture to create a new computer space and lounging area for our teen patrons. The teen area also received updated computer furniture to better align with teen interests. Other purchases included replacing adult furniture, benches, and computer chairs. The outreach department is moving to Fairmont where the owl lives. So the owl lives in this building, but outreach is kind of at May. So we are actually moving that here. Our computer lab is being converted to a staffed workspace with six permanent workstations, two extra computer workspaces for floating staff, and a work table. So youth services and outreach will actually share this space. The original space for youth services is quite, quite small, just only a couple of workstations and they kind of threw that stuff. Anyone have a question?
Thank you.
Great.
For the open house, have plans to bring the fire truck and the other vehicles back sometime?
I don't know. I know Wyeth does the touch and truck program, and I don't know if they, Lexi.
I believe they're doing that as part of summer reading.
Yeah, it still happens, right?
As part of summer reading program kickoff on June 3rd, over here.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, good. Would we have a block party again this year?
Let's see, okay. Um, yeah, that's been transferred over to the programming department.
Oh, okay, okay.
To be there.
Okay. I would like to be there.
You know, it's, it's too bad about the food forest because I really thought that was such a wonderful idea, wasn't it? Ten year, apartment years ago that was. And it's just, it's too bad that we're not kind of scrambling to try to find.
Well, Bianca's actually working on, we're working on something right now with that.
Good.
In terms of making partnership with the Master Gardeners.
Right.
And see what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, but you know, it's too bad that we're there, right? Because it wasn't that long ago when they were planted.
That's not the only area on city property where they were. Just to let you know, I'll just leave it at that, but there was a huge problem down around Reservoir. And thankfully, it's trees here, but it was kind of a mess.
Was it trees down there as well?
It was trees. It was raised beds and it just was let go to weeds. They, they just did not apparently have the people to, and I was not directly engaged, it wasn't their work. They just not have the people at the end of the day to deal with it and to manage it. You have to manage. You have to manage things. And they didn't. So it was, they got kind of upset when the city said, this isn't gonna, this can't stay this way. But they were, I mean, all of us down there bush hogging. I mean, it was a mess. So luckily, it wasn't as extensive here, but it just didn't seem like they were very well organized. Maybe, maybe didn't have the people, so.
Any questions?
Just a couple of things to point out real quick. Number one, one of the great things that Bianca has been able to do for the library as a whole, and this library in particular, as well as the community, is make those relationships and develop a lot of partnerships, like she had mentioned with the Good Neighbor Project, to be able to do things for this particular community. This is the only, this is the only library of ours that has a student food pantry. This is also, we're next door to now a food pantry for the community that Bianca was able to help participate in to make sure that happens. And then the other thing I want to accentuate is that she manages the facility as well as the building and all this related to that. And I think it's underappreciated how much is involved with that at times and how annoying some of it can get. So for example, we, over the last couple of years, we've upgraded our fire alarm panels up here. And so with our current system, we're having some issues with receiving a faulty trouble indicator. And so Northeast Lobby, number 42, is gonna set off at 12, between 12 and 4 a.m. on a consistent basis, usually over the weekends. And so Bianca's number one on that list. And so she's gonna be getting the calls, and then Casey's gonna be getting the calls as well. So getting woken up in the middle of, middle of the night is challenging at times as well. So I just wanted to point those out. And then the other thing is, once this meeting concludes, we'll have an opportunity to go with Bianca a tour of Fairmont if you are interested in attending. You'll learn a little bit more and see a little bit more of the building.
When we're in the children's area, if you haven't noticed it before, there's the alphabet made and painted on the wall and in the form of animals. And when I first saw that, I, I was just sure that it was 3D, that there's something you could touch, but it's actually painted flat on the wall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, come and.
I'll tell it to the, we were in Palm Springs this past month, and we went on an architectural tour of the mid-century modern houses. It's a very extensive tour. And before this tour started, the docent, now where are you from, Joe? And so people are like, oh, I'm from Vermont. So she gets to me and I'm like, I'm from Iowa. She literally looked at me like, I don't know what you're talking about. She said not one word. She just turned away. All right, I accept that. So the tour, she's showing us Edward Durrell Stone-built houses, right? So I said, as we're walking, you know, like to the next, I said, oh, you know, in the small city that I'm from, we have, our library is designed by Edward Durrell Stone. And she said, well, have you seen the embassy in New Delhi? Because is it like that? And I said, yeah, I have seen it as a matter of fact. I have. And I said, yes, it is the same. That's all she's saying. It's like, well, you know, and, and I mean, it's quite an, as a comedian, I'm really hoping we can get some. And like, done. You're from Iowa. I don't care. It was, it was kind of like. Just thought I'd pass that on. The other thing is that you, I'm an e-reader, like that is what I mainly check out. And the Riverbend does not have very good ebooks from my reading perspective. So when I'm in California, I went to Pasadena Life Break, and I can get an e-card to the whole Los Angeles County library system. And I have that now. And they have like everything. I'm an e-reader. I'm just saying, if you want to branch out in any way, not, I mean, because it isn't like I'm taking away from here. I check with here first. I check, I have both accounts. I check here. Nope, don't have that. Never heard of it. Okay, I'll go to the, I'll go to the. So I think I'm gonna try like New York and Minneapolis and just bigger systems and just see. Anyway, that's just my little tip.
There are also a lot of other libraries nationwide that for a fee, you can get a card from them for exactly what you just described, an out-of-service card.
Yeah, and this is.
So seventy-five dollars a year or something like that.
But you don't need it for that LA library. I haven't checked the others. No, I just, I went, and they're like, yeah, sure, but here's your number. Here's your card.
Do you have any trouble getting items?
No.
Because I think they would be, their patrons give priority or local patrons, I think. That's great.
I don't, I don't think so. They have a lot more copies.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I still have waiting time.
And they don't know where I wait.
But I don't.
Where all the potatoes come from.
We met these guys, these people from Idaho, and they're like, yeah, well, we get the whole, oh, corn? And I say, oh, we get the potato. Such a kid for visiting the coast, you know, confusion. But I, and I went to the Jeopardy! Show. We were the, not contestants, but, you know, audience. And we were aligned with these women. And, and one of them had been from the Midwest, and she says, oh, and where are you from? And I said, I went. She said, I hate your governor. I said, why? Well, sure, I can go there with you. That's fine. And then, so we started talking and she said, I thought everyone in Iowa had a certain political view. I'm gonna have to tell my friends about you. So this is what you get from being from Iowa people. I'm just saying, it's getting, it's getting ugly out there.
Yeah, Florida, that, a whole lot of things too. So the lady in Palm Springs doesn't have much to talk about.
Okay, well, last item on the agenda, of course, is adjourn the meeting. So we have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sure. A motion to adjourn.
Time, Chris, to, motion in a second. Given there's no discussion. All in favor of adjourn the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Anyone to vote? Motion, seating, adjourn. Thank you very much.
I know, and then I have to read the minutes. And then I, this has to be corrected. And I said, someone was texting. Get off.